Welcome to the Tuesday, February 20th, 2024 session of Lake Forest City Council. The city clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Ta.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Walder.
Present.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Freshlight.
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Alderman Walder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is appointments to board and commissions. We have tonight an appointment of Megan Carney for appointment to the Deerpath Middle School.
Sorry. Please join me for the.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty to justice for all.
Thank you for that. Sorry. All right, back to board and commission appointments. Tonight, we have an appointment of Megan Carney to Deerpath Middle School Representative. So may I have a motion to approve the appointment of Megan Carney?
Some moves. Seconded.
Okay. Any opposed? No, motion carries. Next item is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Good evening. Included in your omnibus agenda for consideration tonight is a construction bid for parking lot improvements at Elawa Park. And given the importance of this project to the community and to the neighborhood, I thought it would be good to have Public Works provide a brief presentation. I think most here know that the parking lot has both been in very poor condition and has been insufficient in meeting a lot of the parking demands out in the area. And so here to talk a little bit about the public process we've been through, whether it be discussion at city council workshops, Public Works Committee, numerous meetings with residents in the local HOA out there, is Public Works Superintendent Byron Coots, and he'll walk us through this. And again, just a reminder, this is on your omnibus agenda for consideration.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. The Public Works Committee and city council have seen this item several times, but as Jason said, we thought it would be a good idea to come and give you, come and give you an update. Is the mic working?
Yes.
Okay. Come give you an update prior to construction starting. So looking at the picture, the bottom lot is what is there currently. And as Jason, as city manager, wish I mentioned, the asphalt is really deteriorating. The issue with the parking lot is that it's during busy times, it's often very congested getting in and out, and there's often not enough parking. So looking at the drawing, you can see at the top, we expanded the parking lot to the north, which adds 32 spaces, and it improves and addresses the congestion issues. So coming into the driveway, it's a little bit wider. There's more room for cars, there's more room for garbage trucks. Also, you can see to the right there along the driveway, there are three truck staging spots, so that'll also decrease the congestion along the driveway. In terms of the scope of the project, we will resurface the existing lot, so that's the south part. We'll expand to the north. And then also, we are adding a bio swell in the west. That is the dark blue that you see that is for water quality. So basically, the parking lot drains from the east to the west. And that bio swell gets filtered and then goes into the wetlands that are naturally in that area. Currently, there is only really one sidewalk in that area, so we are adding sidewalks, both at the south and then in the middle. In between both lots, there's an east-west sidewalk, which will connect to bike racks, ultimately to the Middle Fork Drive. And then also will connect to the west, so there's a connection to the walking path as well. And then at the north part of the lot, you can't see it on this drawing, but we will be adding some landscape screening, which was really emphasized by the HOAs whenever we talked to them. So for this slide, this shows some of the timeline or some of the different touchpoints that we've had since 2022. It is important to note that there was actually coordination going back to 2016 for different items. But what you can see is we have had a lot of interaction with the, with you guys, with the city council, with the Public Works Committee and residents in general. So in May and July, city staff met with the HOAs, and really, the concern was really about the landscaping. So that is something that we have emphasized with this project, and I'll go into that here in a little bit. And then in August and November, we presented the concept, the concept which included the expansion. We presented that to the Public Works Committee as well as the finance committee. More recently, we presented the project, the actual construction bid, to the Public Works Committee in February. And then tonight, on omnibus, is the actual approval of the construction contract. Looking at the bottom right of the timeline, the three boxes on the bottom right, we are looking to start construction in late March, early April. That would allow us to have a substantial completion by May 10th. And basically, what substantial completion means is that the surface is completely open, it's striped, and there's only really punch list remaining. And then the next two weeks after that, we'll have final completion, and that's the punch list that I was just referring to, with final completion prior to May 24th, because there's some weddings that are starting that weekend. One other item on this one, so it's not noted in the timeline, but there's a private stakeholder that is very involved with the landscaping in that area, and our staff has reached out to that team along the way. So in terms of construction coordination, one of the big stakeholders we're working with is Elawa. We've met with them numerous times over the last few months, and it's going to be ongoing during the construction. What we did with the specifications, the actual construction documents, is we restricted the work hours, and the reason for that is to accommodate evening food programs. So basically, we restricted it, so you can't, the contractor can't work past four, which isn't that unusual. They're typically done by three anyways. And then we restricted activities on the weekends, especially in May. And the reason for that is because they have different markets and such in May. Another coordination item with Elawa is the farm structure, and I believe you saw that item maybe two weeks ago or four weeks ago, related to the installation of that farm structure. So we are working with Community Development and Elawa in terms of having them complete that installation in March, I believe, prior to our project starting. The reason for that being is so that we're minimizing the amount of trucks and stuff associated with their project going over our new asphalt. And then in terms of staging, the plan is to basically build the expanded lot first, get it up to what we call binder, which is the first layer of asphalt, allow cars to be parking on that while we're resurfacing the existing lot, get that up to the same level, and then basically only close it for one day and just asphalt it altogether. And then in terms of landscape screening, if you look at the picture on the right there, that is a draft design that we received with Manfordini or from Manfordini. They are the ones that are typically landscaping that area. They're very familiar with it. So the point of this is to really provide some screening on the north end of the parking lot, now that the parking lot is further to the north, and restrict some of the sightlines to the residences to the northeast. We included a landscape allowance in the bid, which will provide for that landscaping. And the landscape concept will be presented to the Civic Beautification Committee, I believe, in March. And this item is on this evening's omnibus vote consideration. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Coots? Okay. Hear none. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, the next item is opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Is there anyone present who would like to address the council? Hearing none, we will now move on to items for omnibus vote consideration as there are no committee reports. I'm going to read these sequentially. If there's any item that an alderman would like to have removed or taken separately, please notify me after I complete the reading. Item number one, approval of the February 5th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Number two, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest for Lake Forest Country Day School and Lake Forest Baseball Association. Number three, approval of an ordinance approving a fee schedule, adjusting water rates for fiscal year 2025. Final approval. Question four, authorize the police department to purchase 16 semi-rugged Panasonic Toughbook laptop computers, Hava Stocking stations, and accessories from CDS Office Technologies for an amount of $63,838. Number five, approval to waive bidding and authorize the purchase of a new safety boat from Professional Boats in the amount of $45,865.16. Six, waive the bidding process and authorize a contract for building repairs at Deerpath Golf Course with E. From Carlson and Son for the amount of $108,801.81 to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $11,000 for a total amount of $119,801.81. Seven, award of a bid for the Grove Campus Roof Replacements and Repair Project to Filato Roofing in the amount of $141,500 to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $14,500 for a total amount of $156,000. Final item, award of the low bid for the Elawa Parking Lot Improvements to Manavault Construction and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $453,210, as well as approving a 10% contingency in the amount of $40,321 for a total cost of $493,531. Are there any items that you would like removed or taken separately?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the eight omnibus items as presented?
Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Freshlight.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
ADA zero name, motion carries.
Very good. There are no old agenda items, so the next is new business. This will be presented by Catherine Cerniak, Director of Community Development. Consideration of a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals in support of an amendment to the special use permit for Gorton Center located at 400 Illinois Road. Waive first reading and grant final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This recommendation comes to you from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Before I get into that recommendation, I want to just to take 30 seconds just to review the history. 1901, the Gorton Building opened as central school. In 1905, it was renamed after Mayor Edward Gorton, who I think is maybe behind Alderman Notes somewhere. He was mayor in 1895. So since 1905, this building has been known as Gorton in one form or another. Gorton School, Gorton Community Center, and today, the Gorton Center. In 1971, District 67 decided to close Gorton School. And the Gorton Building sat empty for about 18 months until H. Brooks Smith and his wife led a community effort to save the building. Save the building, save the site, and at that time, they saved it for the purpose of hosting community meetings. Gorton has evolved, as many other community buildings have in our community. And it was rescued two times after that. And today, it is a thriving community facility. Tonight, I want to talk very briefly about special uses in Lake Forest. The impetus for this amendment, I would like to review the ZBA recommendation, both the recommendation for the permitted uses and the conditions and council action. The current special use permit under which Gorton operates was approved in 1998. And that special use permit, I think it's about a page and a half long, very different from special use permits that we see today. That special use permit was put in place to allow a significant addition to Gorton. And much like the early special use permits for Elawa Farm, there was uncertainty about how Gorton would evolve. So as with other special uses in the community, Gorton is a non-residential use located, in this case, adjacent on three sides to residential uses. Other special uses in the community, churches, schools, Elawa Farm, Grove Campus, private clubs, Rag Dale. This community really is built around those special uses, Lake Forest College, the hospital. The special use process has been put in place, rather than just give a broad zoning approval to public uses or government uses or institutional uses. The special use permit process requires those non-residential uses located on residential properties to go through a process, to go through a public process, to allow a public hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals, or if it's a new use, the plan commission, and then to come before the city council for final approval. That special use process allows all parties to be involved in a negotiation. Those operating the community use, neighbors, members from the community who perhaps don't live nearby but use that use, and our boards, commissions, and the city council. The special use process has proven to work well. The special use process is not perfect. Several of you have been involved in numerous revisions to the Elawa Farm special use permit in particular. As the uses there evolved and changed, there were some issues. And today, after probably about three or four fairly recent revisions, there seems to be an appropriate balance, enough to allow Elawa Farm to thrive as a community venue, but also to balance the interests of neighbors living nearby. Impetus for this amendment, as I said, the current special use permit has nothing. It says nothing about uses. It says nothing about conditions. Gorton, particularly during the pandemic, experimented with outdoor uses. There was more activity. It was one of the only places that people in the community could gather. And although the number of outdoor events has decreased since during the pandemic, the community really enjoyed those uses, whether it was the block party, whether it was outdoor movies, whether it was concerts. But they were disruptive to some extent, some events more than others, to surrounding neighbors. And in response to the city hearing concerns from some of those neighbors, we did reach out to Gorton. And of course, to Gorton's credit, they engaged in the process, although they would have much preferred, probably, to operate under the current special use permit with really no limits. They came to the table. The zoning board reviewed the request in, I believe, November of last year, and then it came back before them more recently with some amendments. The zoning board ultimately voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the special use permit, which is much longer than a page and a half, much longer than the 1998 special use permit, and articulates specific uses. What I'm presenting here is just high level. You do have the full ordinance in your packet. But the zoning board recommended that the special use permit acknowledge the indoor activities, which occur daily, a variety of activities, classes, programs, musical productions, office uses by some of our not-for-profit groups. The Lake Forest Preservation Foundation has an office in Gorton Community Center. And the Children's Learning Center also operates at Gorton on a daily basis. Gorton operates private rentals, again, similar to what occurs at Elawa. Private rentals help to generate revenue, but they have to be done in moderation and in a way that places some limits around those private events. And finally, the special use permit recognizes that Gorton hosts outdoor events, whether it's, again, films or concerts or block parties, Safety Town. I know there's a host of others. After the first meeting, the zoning board asked for more detail about what types of events, so they could fully evaluate it. And they received quite a bit of information from Gorton, Gorton staff, executive director Amy Wagleyardo. And from that, the zoning board recommended numerous conditions. Again, they are detailed in the ordinance, but the highlights were the conditions speak to parking. Several residents raised concerns about parking during events on Illinois Road. There's a curve at Illinois Road right there, and during events, that you basically have a single travel lane. That seemed reasonable, and it's addressed as a condition. The conditions establish a 10:00 PM ending time for outdoor events and limit amplified outdoor events to 15 on an annual basis. The special use permit speaks to and defines amplified sound. From the indoor perspective, the rental events in the Stewart Room, the Nagel Room, those at times have been problematic. And so in response to that, there are conditions that speak to requiring that doors and windows of those rooms must remain closed, that the amplified music cannot be out on the terrace adjacent to the northwest corner of the building. Also directs that as we move forward and as Gorton moves forward and thinks about budget priorities, that consideration be given to an internal sound system, which could avoid some of those events, bringing in their own large speakers. And also to consider, at an appropriate time, whether some further strengthening of the windows as an acoustical barrier. Would it be an advantage to change out that glass in the future when that fits into the budget at some point? The conditions speak to building entrances and note that the entrance, the main entrances on the west side of the building and the south-facing side of the building be used for events so that the main entrance is not through the terrace, which is located closest to the homes to the north. It prohibits smoking within 25 feet of the building and along the north side of the building, where there's that narrow strip, again, between the building and surrounding residences. It requires Gorton to have an event manager on site and a designated event manager. That in and of itself made a big difference at Elawa Farm, when there actually was someone who was identified, and the responsibilities of that person include assuring that the capacity of the event is not exceeded, that the end times are observed, that in the case of the Stewart Room, that the windows and doors remain closed, someone with the authority to make sure the event is operating in an appropriate way. And finally, although it's not the last condition addressed in the ordinance, the ordinance recommends a condition allowing a temporary stage during the summer months, requiring that it be on the south side of the property with the speakers slightly facing to the northwest so that we're not creating an access issue by placing the stage immediately west of the building in front of the entrance, perhaps limiting emergency access and not directing the speakers directly to homes to the south or to the north. What you have in front of you is a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It was a unanimous recommendation, seven to zero. If you choose to do so, be appropriate to unapprove an ordinance granting amendments to the Gorton special use permit. If you choose to do so, waive first reading, grant final approval. You also have the option to not accept the recommendation of the Zoning Board of Appeals, deny the petition. And finally, the council always has the authority to remand the petition back to the zoning board. If you choose to do so, I would encourage you to give specific direction or highlight exactly what they may have missed or what they should focus on. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Alderman Novit.
I think it's great that this special use permit has been codified, or whatever the right word is, to give everyone guidelines and expectations. I did have a couple of questions, and I think you've addressed some of them. You mentioned with the amplified sound, does Gorton already have an internal speaker system that can be accessed through computers or iPods or whatever people use now?
They do have an internal sound system. It does have some limitations. And again, as you may recall, with Elawa, for events that use that internal system, those were not classified as amplified events. And you do have a definition in the ordinance of amplified events. And I can't recite it, but it's continuous music or speaking that continues uninterrupted for 30 minutes or more and is amplified by electronic means, or something to that extent.
When that speaker system is installed, assuming that it will have, whatever it is, and I'm not technologically educated to know precisely what I'm talking about, but will there at some point be an expectation that renters will use this contained system in an effort to minimize the outside bleed of sound?
As technology advances, certainly that will become an option. There was no requirement and there's no condition that renters use the internal system.
Okay.
But again, I keep using Elawa as an example, but it's a good one. We heard from Gorton staff that there were occasions on which, and the zoning board asked this question as well, there were occasions on which certain vendors or certain renters really operated in a way that wasn't conducive to Gorton and wasn't conducive to the residential neighborhoods. Gorton has said that those vendors and those renters perhaps are on a list, and Gorton has the ability to control who they rent to. But no, at this time, there is no requirement that the internal sound system be used.
Okay. Letter C in this paragraph is in compliance with city code, "Sound levels and base levels shall be kept at reasonable levels." Who's enforcing this?
Reasonable is a difficult term, but the really important piece that came out of this discussion is that I believe it raised the awareness of Gorton staff and the Gorton board. It certainly raised the awareness of staff. And keep in mind, special use permits can be returned to the zoning board to be further amended. We know this isn't perfect. There has to be that cooperation and collaboration, and we found that right balance at Elawa.
So, and I agree, I was on the zoning board when Elawa was reconfigured, and it was an absolute collaboration of all parties involved, and it worked. And that's what makes all of this stuff work. But when it comes to, so if there's a party and it's too loud, what's the process? Does the neighbor call the police?
I believe if there's a party and it is too loud, we will get complaints.
Yeah.
Sometimes at 10:30 at night, we will get complaints. We do our best to monitor those. And with any special use permit, if there's a complaint, if there's an alleged violation, the first thing we do, much as we do with zoning code violations, we reach out to the party. Amy and I communicate frequently. We will reach out, we'll discuss the event, we'll... We work first on that cooperation and collaboration. If there's a repeated violation, staff has the ability to bring something back to the zoning board.
Okay, Ben, but if it's 10:15 and it's way too loud, is this event manager that is provided for in this SUP going to be the person who has to go over to the noise maker and say, "You got to turn it down"? Is there going to be any immediate relief, is my question?
The event manager certainly is the first point of contact. But again, we will get the complaint.
Yeah.
Community development can also coordinate with the police department.
Okay.
If there is a special use permit in place, we have the ability to make that contact. And again, reasonable...
I know, it's real speculative.
Is a bit difficult. But we know that on Saturday mornings at Lake Forest College football field, they play football on that field, and they start very early, and the music is very loud. Alderman Walder, you hear it?
I can hear it too.
You hear it. So living next to these non-residential uses, just as living next to the Central Business District, it offers benefits, but it also perhaps offers some challenges. And again, striking the right balance, there's no single solution.
I just have one more question. I'm sorry, thank you for your indulgence. With the outdoor amplified sound, obviously, it's going to be, I presume it's going to be weather permitting. Will there be, like, May through October? Is there going to be a point of reference for what's available, what times are available?
The outdoor events are primarily hosted by Gorton.
Right.
So they are, those aren't private rental events. Those are hosted by Gorton with multiple Gorton staff and likely board members attending those events.
But, go ahead.
And yes, they're, for the most part, good weather events. And if we have a terrible storm, they... And if, if we have a terrible storm, they, my expectation is they would be canceled.
I guess my question is, are they permitted beginning June 1st through September 30th? Are we putting any kind of limits on that?
We are not. As the condition states, it's 15 annually and then speaks to not on consecutive evenings except in the case of outdoor films where it's really not economical to, to have that type of event for a single night.
So that's two, that's four times they can do two movies back to back. That's the implication that I'm reading in this thing. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Alderman Walden.
I just have one question out of curiosity. I see that the ordinance limits it to 15 events per month, year. Or no, I'm sorry, per year. How many were there last year? How many outdoor events, Amy?
Less than 15.
Less than 15 from Ms. Wagleyardo.
Somewhere between 10 and 15, something like that, okay.
Other questions?
Alderman Weber.
I just wanted to make a comment. Kathy, you said collaboration, I think that's really the key here with the neighbors and you brought up the benefits of living close to town in the central business district. Ward four, we sometimes get complaints of tollway traffic noise. So, you know, everywhere around town, whether it's leaf blowers or a couple of outdoor parties, I think that working together with the neighbors and everyone just stepping back and being a little more patient, I think is a great way to look at 2024.
Another question. Kathy, if a 16th event were needed toward the collaboration end, is there a means by which Gorton could say, hey, we want to squeeze one more in? Or there, it's just an absolute?
You want me to say that in public? Again, we always try and be collaborative. If, if we've had 15 events that, that have all worked well without any problem.
Consider on a case by case basis.
Talk to the neighbors.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I just want to thank Gorton and the neighbors and Kathy, you and, and all the volunteers on the Zoning Board of Appeals. You know, I've been on this council for six years. I've got to term off here in a month or so. I mean, our, our community development process works. It's about being good neighbors and listening and talking. It's much better to have more structure and to have an event manager and articulate the uses. And city does a great job of monitoring and very confident that this will go very smoothly and it's a good thing for our community. And so thank you very much for everybody to work in through the process, especially Kathy.
Very good. And just to emphasize, this has worked very well with Elawa, I think. And I think there's no reason to think that this won't work just as well, as you say. Nothing's perfect, you know, but considering the circumstances and the proximities, I think this is a, a really good development. Okay, at this time, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? Please come to the dais and state your name and address, please.
I was advised on going against Goliath, the city of the city, for the city, by the city. But I know, you know, we've been on boards together, Nancy and I-
Excuse me, before we start, two things. Number one-
Oh, you have 180 seconds?
I'd like you to state your name and your address so we know who, who's addressing us. And then, as you pointed out, 180 seconds, three minutes, but we're flexible on that.
Okay, it's Mary, first, it's Mary Sanders at 391 East Deer Path. And my neighbor, the Drascas, want me to read part of this letter. They weren't able to be here, but first I wanted to ask you, did you all see the YouTube that's publicly published? The YouTube of the Lady Gaga problem? No. This has been very frustrating because this is a noise problem and the best way to evidence is for you to download and it's YouTube. It has nearly 300 hits on it about the damage that's done to the neighbors and you can really experience what it feels like to live next door to a difficult situation. And I'm going to have to play it then, like I did on the first one.
Excuse me, but we're not going to play audio or video tonight. That's not part of this.
It's not, I played it for the zoning board.
You have three minutes to speak to us.
This is a noise problem, how else are you going to hear what happens?
I think we all understand what noise is, but audio and video is not allowed at, at the presentation. So please just tell us what you'd like to tell us and we'll move on from there.
So we can't have any audio?
That is correct, other than you.
Well, it's hard for me to replicate a couple of things, but before we, too many questions are brought up. The neighbors, we have had two letters from Gorton. They have not reached out to us for any noise problems. The Drascas called Amy, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, but Amy. And three calls, she never returned the calls. There's not a lot of cooperation. And I've lived at this property 40 years and I know that it has been difficult. And as neighbors, Gorton doesn't reach out. We're not sure why, but there are only three of us, as the zoning, one of the zoning board members said. And so if there were more sound issues, wouldn't there be more people? No, there are only three of us. We are on the property line and it is damaging health-wise. You know, the Environmental Protection Act talks about environmental noise pollution. It defines if you, if you were to be there and listen to what happens, you'd hear it. We're not, I'm not here for fun, this is so important. And there were a couple of other aspects. Elawa was great, what was done there was great, but you have to understand, Elawa is a whole different thing than Gorton. It is not densely located with homes adjacent. There's a whole bunch of issues that are different. And Gorton's remit is for programming and so on and so forth indoors. And the reason why it was broadly written was to protect the neighbors. I was here when that happened and it's to protect the neighbors. There are already laws in place for noise, for responsibility, for accountability. Why legislate more if you were to do the current one right now and enforce it? But the city owns the building, the city runs the building. They enforce it, there's, there's not a lot of feedback that way. And we are so frustrated because we are not getting any kind of recognition of this issue. The only way to hear about a noise issue is to go on YouTube at 60045 Lake Forest and you can hear what actually we suffer from.
Okay, please, please begin winding up, okay?
I'm sorry?
Please begin winding up, the time is up.
Well, let's see, this is from the Drascas. It says, "Our Deer Path homes have been dominant presence in the neighborhood for over a century. Our properties have valued original historic district housing stock and are blasted by unmonitored environmental noise pollution, a recognized health hazard with both the National and State EPA. The city of Lake Forest building in prior use was a quiet neighborhood school and is now rented by the current tenant and operator, the Gorton Center. The tenant is operating uses in violation of the, beyond the legal scope of its current zoning. And we are in the heart of Lake Forest historic district. Original homes remaining, but they continue to be negatively impacted by the operator and tenant sales and rentals of both the Stewart Room and the government-owned and designated parking places with a semi-permanent stage."
I'm going to ask you to submit the letter to us and we will make sure all the aldermen get a chance to read it. I don't think we need to read the whole thing.
Well, I wasn't going to, I'm jumping around.
Well, that's okay, we're well past three minutes at this point. And if the Drascas were present, they could have three minutes. Please submit the letter to us and we will make sure all the aldermen get to see it and consider it.
Before the vote?
Well, we are going to vote tonight. And if we don't pass this on first reading, they will have an opportunity to consider that for a second reading.
I think that's due diligence to do that because this is such an issue.
Excuse me, but the letter could have been submitted before, right now. So I, I do think we're doing what we can do.
No, no, I, I said, I'm, I'm not referring to the letter. I appreciate you saying you'll accept it, but I mean a review of this. This is too important and it needs to have alarms, arms-length review by a disinterested third party to be fair for everyone and the benefit of everyone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Any questions?
Any questions? No, again, thank you very much.
Sure, and thank you.
Okay. And as far as the letter goes, if you will provide that to the city clerk if you haven't already?
I will.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments or questions that any aldermen have regarding the matter? Okay, so at this point then, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the consideration of a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals in support of an amendment to the special use permit for Gorton Center located at 400 Illinois Road. And Biddy, how do we address the issue of waiving first reading?
That actually could be, do you want to waive first reading or do you want to-
Well, I guess that's the first vote is the question is, does the council want to waive first reading and move to a final approval? Do we need to take a vote on that?
You can take it separately or even build it into the one motion altogether, waive the first reading and grant.
Well, let's take it as two pieces so that we can say that we seriously considered that, okay. So is there a motion to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Should be up for debate at this point if we want to do that. So once there's a motion and it's been seconded, it should be discussed amongst us.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I made the motion. So we have a community development process, the ZBA does the work. We have the volunteers and the public hearings to, you know, to hash this out and figure out all stakeholders and the petitions aren't relitigated here at the council. And I think the ZBA did a great job and thank you for all those that served on it and all the neighbors that participated and communicated and, and Gorton for going through it. And it's a balance and a process that we will work through together. And if there's issues or things out of balance, things will be brought to our attention and we will address them like we do through our processes. And, and we do a great job doing that as a community. So I'm very comfortable that there's lots of due diligence and public comment and I really trust the ZBA, 7-0. That's a really good sign that there was consensus on that and I thank them for their efforts.
I would like to echo Alderman Preschlack's perspective. The city has historically put a great deal of reverence to the work that our boards and commissions have done, especially in these real estate boards. And I, I really do think that, again, it appeared in front of ZBA twice, if I'm not mistaken. I read through both sets and looked at the supplemental information that came through. I'm entirely comfortable waiving first reading and letting it stand on the merits and acknowledging that there are those who may not agree, but that's part of the process. So I'm very comfortable moving forward.
Are there others? Comments, questions? I would like to just provide further support for what's been said. I think that contrary to what has been said this evening, there has been a process, there has been an opportunity for neighbors and other interested parties to weigh in on this. It has gone through the system and been approved, you know, unanimously. So I do think this is totally appropriate to consider waiving first reading. So that being said, since there's been a motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gasharian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
AKA, zero nae, motion carries.
Very nice. Are there any other issues that the aldermen would like to bring up or discuss this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we now need to-
Oh, we need to vote, sorry.
Grant final approval.
You have to do it again?
You know, we've just, the first motion was to waive the-
I'm sorry.
We can.
Okay. So at this time then, we need a motion to approve the recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals in support of an amendment to the special use permit for Gorton Center located at 400 Illinois Road. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Okay, excuse me, apparently we have comments, okay. We can, we can certainly comment, I thought we-
I just, I, I, living in the first ward, living with the Gorton Community Center as part of my representative area, I just want to say that I think the special use permit is long overdue, having lived through the special use process with Elawa, having been part of a reworking of the special use permit, given the actual impact of it on the neighbors, knowing that the process works. You have to start somewhere and I think this is a great starting place. There's number limits, there's sound limits, there's now a person on staff that has to be in the building during the events. There's a process for which there's, to give feedback, to, to make changes if they're needed. I, I'm fully supportive of this special use permit. Thank you.
Are there others?
Mr. Mayor, just want to make it clear, as the motion was stated, it conclude, it does include all the conditions recommended by the zoning board. Just want to make sure everybody understands that, that it's clear.
Okay, I, I think that is incorporated in what we stated, correct? A recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes, just want to make that clear.
And we have a motion and it's been seconded, so are we prepared to move forward to the roll call vote now?
Certainly. Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gasharian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
Alderman Notes. AKA, zero nae, motion carries.
Very good. Are there any other items that the aldermen would like to discuss at this time? No. That being said, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two, 11 pending or imminent litigation, five purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, and six disposition of property and the consideration for the sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All right, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gasharian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
AKA, zero nae, motion also carries.
Okay, at this time, we will adjourn into executive session.